Our topic is special education. Your job, she's been here with us for a few years and doing a great job, so thank you. And after we take the roll call?
We do, we do a roll call.
And plenty of legions now.
Uh, I think we roll call first.
Okay.
Elizabeth Barrett?
Here.
Yeah.
Lisa Rappaport?
Here.
Uh, Anne Walker?
Yep.
Margot Peabody?
Here.
Nancy Carter?
Here.
Brooke Nettles?
Yeah.
Mike French?
Here.
Carrie Nelson?
Here.
Kim Bucci?
Here.
It's down right here.
Okay. Uh, public comment, we will have public comment if there's anyone available and willing to speak. However, we will limit it to the budget. Um, and, and you know, this particular pocket budget, the special education. So we want to make sure that we get the public's questions regarding the topic that we're discussing. So we have any one? Oh, I'm sorry. I said it now.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, in the just one liberty and justice for all.
Okay. That right out. Who would, who is, uh, who should we have?
So this is our opening of the public hearing on the FY twenty three. That's our first public hearing. Also just mention to our participants here, uh, we're in a different room. It's a crowded city hall tonight. So the producer and I have been working on a A V setup. Webcams over there, I'll try not to zoom in on YouTube much, keep it quiet. Um, and but, uh, by the phone lines, uh, that's what we're picking up from. So it's a little bit of a different setup. So, you know, I don't think I have to tell you to talk loud, right?
Okay.
So, but that's that. So, uh, let me see. Uh, so Nancy, public comment, we have no one signed up to do it in house. Do we have anyone in our Zoom audience that wants to comment on the budget? Raise your digital hand. I, I see none.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So we will move on to the public hearing. Do we start with Jeanette, Nathan, George?
So we're gonna start with, um, Jeanette. So who is our first presenter for this workshop session?
The, uh, whole unit may not know me, Jeanette Sauer, Director of People Support and Instruction. Uh, area targeting is all the special education cost centers that I have oversight of. I tried to provide a lot of information upfront so that you come prepared with questions. So I'm not going to go line by line. Um, but on the first page of the information I provided was items of note that were changes in the budget. And then some background information on all the cost centers, including descriptions. Um, for those of you that are returning board members, a lot of this is same format, but I updated the numbers and the data throughout it. Uh, and I did want to still provide information on Medicaid and out of district costs, because there's always typically, uh, questions raised about that. So it's repeat information for returning work members with updated data behind it. So, um, systems psychologist is the title of cost center one thirty seven. Uh, includes our school psychologist. And a couple of years ago, we added a board certified behavior analyst, a V C B A. And in this one, the biggest addition is we are looking to increase. We've already tried to do it this year and had no success adding an additional V C B A to our budget. Uh, and then the other item of note that I put down is, uh, slightly increasing our cost for any outside evaluations that we have to conduct. We're seeing, uh, additional needs and additional requests for sometimes people outside of our school system to conduct evaluations. So those are the two items of note in this cost center. Anyone prefer if I run through it or I want to stop and let you guys ask questions? I could do it either way.
Does anyone have any questions with the V C B A?
Or anything in one thirty seven?
Yeah, I guess the only question I have is, do you see an increase because of COVID?
Uh, I would say generally across the board, we're seeing an increase in needs. Uh, and if I could kind of give an overview, I reached out to all my coordinators in all the buildings and said, kind of, if you wanted to say something, what would you say? And they just said increase in complexity and increase in request for, uh, what's called a referral, meaning take a look at a child because we're concerned you're coming from staff or parents. And that has more than doubled in most of our buildings. At the point, for example, at the high school era, had thirteen referrals before we went to break. We usually have that many in a year. Um, and I got same information for most buildings, they're seeing that increase in referrals. That, those don't always lead to evaluations on identification, but it certainly is showing an increase in concern for students.
Any other questions about the special ed, I mean, the, um, uh, systems psychologists? Yes, Liz?
Um, I just wanted to follow up with the V C B A. Um, so you are looking to add a V C B A? And, and what's the difference between adding and contracting out? Is there any sort of cost benefit to contracting out or the V C B A is more available if we contract out?
We are currently contracting out just to cover the services that are in I U Ps. And we're at the tipping point where when we figured out how many hours, it is actually more cost effective to get one internally than the cost that we're spending. Additionally, I'm trying to create a peer group of the psychologists and V C Bs internally that they can problem solve and to create systems for behavioral support. When you have a contracted service, it's harder to do that because you're not working internally with your own staff. Uh, but right now our cost for contracting out is actually outweighing cost of what it would cost to get an internal V C B A.
Viv, did you have a question?
Yeah, and I think we may have asked you this already, but, um, I know there haven't been any applications or at least last time there hadn't been any applications for that position. Is there any evidence that would suggest that raising the salary for that position would bring us more candidates?
We are in competition with, for example, year round schools like Birch Tree Center that have, um, many V C B A staff. And they're, because they're a year round school, they pay at a higher rate. Our V C Bs right now aren't teacher salaries, so we are limited to the confines of working within a contract. But, um, there is competition in other areas besides schools or V C Bs that, that is competition for us. I do have some hope that advertising over the summer would make a difference rather than after the school year has started and everyone's kind of in their routines.
Okay. I think we see, you have your handle.
Yeah, I have a quick question just about where you're going. Are these programs, your speed, your request for referrals and also more ultimate service delivery? Or is just more evaluations that you're doing?
Uh, we're, the process is a time process. So I think in the next two years, we would see the concerns being raised this year and next, leading to a large increase potentially of I U P that service needs. So we're just in the front end of that, um, and figuring it out. There's also processes in special ed that we do have to rule out that they have received proper instruction and to make sure that it's a disability, not just a need for instruction and intervention. So, um, that's, that's a question that's coming forward to teams when you have students that have had to have multiple absences or have not accessed instruction as they would have remotely versus in person. So that's a, that's a question that teams are really, is really wrestling with. Is this an identifiable disability or does this lack of access to instruction in the typical manner that they could perform successfully with?
Oh, so I'm wondering, um, you don't have to give it to me tonight. But do you have in one place, like, how many F T Es do we have that are V C Bs or psychologists or, or in your call center? I, I'm guessing I'd have to get what's outside of your call centers from George or Steve. But it would be nice to have an overall sense of exactly what do we have in the district for, you know, supportive services.
Yeah, we, we have these two school psychologists. Now, one is represented as point five and he actually is, uh, full time. He's partially paid out of a different funding source. So Jim Sparrow is a one point O, Tommy Reynolds is a one point O. And right now our V C B A is one point O, we're looking at a fourth. And that's throughout the whole district. I'm not aware of any, any other call centers.
And then Paris, follow up your call centers.
Paris?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then are you seeing an increase in five oh four plans as well?
Um, and that is sometimes the outcome of the referral process is we've identified a need for accommodations or a disability that exists perhaps medically, but they don't need specially designed instructions. So again, I think that would potentially be a, we're gonna see that this year into next, a potential increase there. If that's with teams that are making referrals all on each side, the child does not need specially designed instructions. They just need accommodations made, then the five oh four plan could be an outcome that another team looks at and decides if a five oh four plan is an appropriate needs support that student.
And is that team still the guidance counselors or is that falling under someone else's?
Uh, five oh four teams are made up by the people that are, are most connected with the student's area of need. So for example, if it's a health need, the nurse might be the one that is in charge of that guidance. Counselors many times are, and that's probably the number one go to five oh four lead person. But we have nurses and sometimes we have speech providers and it's a hearing loss. So they can be made up by the members that best fit the student's need and profile before we address any accommodations. Generally, guidance counselors are the go to five oh four people in each building.
And we're having adequate staffing for that?
Uh, I would, I think you shared throughout my presentation that we are feeling that demand and staff, including guidance counselors, are a question point.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the side?
Carrie, it may not be the right place for it, but I did have questions regarding not a hate billing. Which section would that make more sense to? So meaning the cost of it or where it comes into revenue?
Revenue.
So I'll turn to Nathan, but there's a revenue section of the budget.
That's a, we have a tuition fees fund where she just mentioned the sixty percent of that psychologist pays. And that's a Medicaid funded portion of, of the department. It's suffering because she'll talk, I know that.
I have Medicaid overdue.
She plans to overview Medicaid, talk about some of the impacts that we have there, but.
Yeah, it'll just be more specific, just, and it might not be the place right now, but I know that other, um, districts that have a health center and have a provider has a bit more of, like, the ability to bill is maximized, but it might not be, it might be pennies compared to what.
So I think they're referring to one step of the process, which is gaining orders and orders bill. And we actually contract with a nurse, the highest level nurse. Yes, the highest level nurse that can sign orders in order to match fiber volume. So we have a process in place to try to do that, but we still have seen a significant increase since then.
Thank you. Margot?
My question might not be, you can punt it to the end, but, um, in light of the referrals, will there be a time where you all have a good sense of, shoot, these are all coming in as needing occupational therapy and we're gonna have to shift that and or speech needs are high, you know? Will that be in time to make that provision? I know what your proposals are for increases, but if it shifts it even more?
Um, the point response, I guess I'd say, we are obligated to provide the services that I U P teams request and we're legally bound to that. So even this year, as our OT needs have maximized that, our staff have had to contract out to get services covered.
Okay.
The additions that I've made are based on reasonable estimate and talking with the teams of where we are now and some of the impact we may see next year related to the OT and speech increases. If they skyrocket more, we would have to contract out for those services. And then again, looking to come to the next budget with a different plan. But there's a reasonable, uh, level of expectation with the increase we have for them to cover into next year.
Okay.
And include some intervention services because we lost that of going into kindergarten, first grade classroom. So I said, as I asked him to use the speech, how do we get some of that back? It was, we need more time across the board, across the district. And we felt like the increases would allow those access points that, you know, while we're on serve better, you know, or earlier inter-processes.
Okay.
Can I just follow up that? Are you, um, you said you're contracting out. Are you seeing a significance in staff shortages when you need more than contract? Like, do you see that becoming a problem to not be able to meet those demands through contracts?
So, uh, in OT land, I have a retired OT from our district that hasn't been able to pick up some things. And at this point, it's not, it, it's an evaluation here to take a pressure point off of a, uh, team. It's a consult on a student that's not identified, but we really feel they have that need. So right now I have that avenue as well as who we typically use for our P T services. They also have OT staff, so we have existing relationships that have served as well in the speech arena as well. Uh, there are three or four agencies that have worked with us in the past and will work with us to get the things covered if they have staff scalable. It is, uh, I will say I need to make a request sooner and with more emphasis in order to get it covered in a timely manner, um, versus just thinking, I think I'll get it. I really am asking teams to tell me as soon as you think there may be a student coming up or a need that I need to cover, because it may take them four to six weeks to figure out there. Schedule some order to try to accommodate this.
Yes.
Uh, for the newbies here, uh, just two things, I guess. Could you tell us, um, where the current folks that are listed here under the psychologists, where, like, what schools they're working with? And then also, um, you know, where is the stuff that you're contracting out? Is that gonna be in the budget somewhere? That, that, it's not on this page though, right?
So there are contracted service lines in each of the, um, uh, building levels. So there's some at elementary levels, some at middle level and some at high school level. So when you see a zero through twenty line, that's where you're finding contracted services for the first part, I guess.
So they end up getting lumped in with all contracted services?
It's a, yes, it's not specific to.
Yeah, go be more specific and go like right now, we're talking about cost center one thirty seven. And when you do look there, let me go back, because this is one of those early on help, helpful items that we could have talked about, right? Every one of these cost centers is set up, you'll see salaries listed first in the, in the entry point on the first page. And, and you'll see a benefit summary that follows that. And then they'll move to a part of the budget that they, they refer to as operating. We refer, I'm part of them now, right? We, we refer to, uh, somebody else taught me a new, right? Um, we refer to as operating and operating is everything not salaries and benefits. So that's contracted services. And if I told you, if I, I could give you a, without giving you more information than you want, um, the account number is, the account number is a small four digit number in here in the list that, that begins with a zero in every case. And this whole document really, cost center to cost center is driven in order of, of, of account number. And the salaries are in the one hundreds, so they come first. And the benefits are two hundreds. And what follows in operating, three hundreds are contracted services of different kinds, as are four hundreds and five hundreds, although they specialize. Six hundreds are all the stuff, so supplies and then software and, uh, and foodstuffs, if there were any need for that. And then seven hundreds are equipment. Now, at the end of each cost center, you'll see those. And so in the case of systems psychologists, where we're in cost center one thirty seven, you'll see a very small cost pointy, but it's just four names there listed at the top of that budget line. And then benefits are summarized. And then in the bottom, there are contracted services as well as a single supply line and equipment line. That's all specific to the cost center of, or the concept, if you will, of psychology and behavioral ser- behavioral services that's fallen in under psychology in general. Part of why this stuff doesn't land in a building budget separately is because in state reporting, we've got to, we've got to call it out and report it out by these particular functions. OT is separate from P T, is separate from speech, is separate from psychology, et cetera. Um, and so a lot of this format, which is maybe not intuitive or, or useful to our needs day by day, it's driven like that because we're, we're, we're so, we're so powerfully controlled by the reporting that we end up doing at the beginning and at the end of the cycle. So anyway, that was a, a one on one, I should have given you that before.
No, I'm sorry, I guess I just wanted to be clear though, because it looks like the psychology contracted services are in there. But you're saying we have some V C B A contracted services right now? And those aren't showing up under this cost center, that those are somehow being integrated into each building's operating budget?
Yes, they are under, uh, you'll see additional ones we go through, um, we have V C B A services. I don't, do we break it down by building? And then in one sixty five, there's also V C B A services as well, which is our out of district tuition. Because we have students that receive those services in out of district places as well.
And then, and eventually, but I mean, you've got it, you're getting a break. Eventually, I think statewide, V C B A services, that whole behavioral idea is probably gonna land in its own, its own function, which is, which is kind of what our cost centers are driven by. Uh, to some extent, it's still landing its own function, like OT and P T have their own V C B A services, the behavioral services probably will end in their own. But they have grown up over the last ten or twelve years. In many cases, and they infiltrate the budget and the state has yet to bring one in and say, hey, wait, this is meaningful, we should have this on its own, in its own concept, so.
And the first part of your question was around the buildings they cover?
Yeah.
Uh, Jim is, uh, so James Sparrow is at, uh, uh, the high school, part of Little Harbor and Don Mero. Tommy Reynolds is at P M S, the Cyclone, and also at the high school. Uh, they both, uh, share if a preschool need were to come up, if lister needs comes up, it kind of depends on what's happening with each of their caseloads. And then we have, uh, needs to evaluate at St. Pats as well as potentially charter schools. Uh, and those, you know, are shared, so concentrated. And they're, they're both at, um, the high school about halftime. And then Little Harbor, Don Mero for Jim and Cyclone and middle school is Tommy. And free, the V C B A covers the entire district right now across all buildings.
So again, Nancy, I know it's, it's something I requested last year. I don't know if that would come through Nathan, through central office or whatever. If we could just get a listing of the services in the district, not just special ed. Jeanette's always very about putting her stuff, her specialty, but just where it is in the buildings, what's outside of special ed, this counselor's social work, you know? You keep being asked about F T Es, but it would be nice to see what's contracted, what's, you know, where are we spending our dollars around these services?
Is that something you can do, Nathan, or?
George? I can start, yeah, I could definitely, I can pull some data sets, push it down.
Is it gonna just be all in one place?
We'll try to make, yeah, try to make it, yeah, intuitive, make it make sense for presentation, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Okay, can we move on to the next item? Jeanette?
Uh, so preschool is cost center one fifty. Um, here you'll see increases for, uh, for educators because we've increased our preschool hours. We were running ages to eleven thirty, forty the week. And this year we decided to expand that by an hour. Um, in addition, we have opened an inclusive preschool setting, meaning it's not just students with disabilities. We will now take students as peer models. Our spots filled up immediately and we, we anticipate that there will be a continued demand. Um, and so those hours across the board were increased. We did also anticipate due to that increase, the man that we may need to expand into afternoons sessions. Um, right now in the afternoons, our staff are working, they're just not running a program. They're out, for example, at Seacoast Community School providing services. Um, we have speech services that connect per, per, throughout the district. Uh, and so we believe that there may be the need to increase to afternoon based on the numbers that we're seeing, the projections and the demand that we have. Uh, so I wanted to make sure that we had some third coverage extending into the afternoons. Um, should we need to do that to cover I U P services and make sure the class sizes aren't too large, but then also to allow more peer models to come in as we try to expand on that program and offer us for early intervention.
So can I, without, without slowing us down so we take all night? Let me just, if you're in, in cost center one fifty, if you're looking at the paraprofessionals from left to right, year over year. So the program has been a three hour program. At those F T Es, there's still, we still only expect five faces, five names, five people. The, the budget will speak to, uh, a pickup of one F T E, one full time equivalent. But in fact, I, I put hours into the new year and I should have put them in for, for comparison sake of the old year. But you, you've got now, everybody is working at least four hours today, but two of them that bump up to six hours. So they jumped from what would have been forty three percent of physician, physician being a seven hour physician, a seven hour day as a standard, they jumped from forty three to sixty six percent, which is a doubling. And when you do that, plus one of them jumping to four hours only a day, they add up forty three percent, forty three percent, fourteen percent add up to what looks like one total, one total person. And the reality is it's just a growing of those, the number of hours that they'll serve today. Just to make sure that this starts with, again, for everybody, we start to make some sense. Yeah, I put those hours to help.
Okay, we'll start on the side of the room this time. Are there any questions for this cost center? Just Carrie's event for keep the, um, tuition, stability tuition for the program for the models.
Yeah, we, uh, when we said it, we tried to keep it, uh, pretty minimal in order to attract, um, anything we heard feedback that's too low related to community based programs. Um, I believe it's four hundred dollars a month for the four daily, um, four hours. So, yeah, we said it well, not knowing how much attention and interest we get and we got plenty.
Thanks. Anyone else? Liz?
Um, so the parents have increased, but the teachers have not increased. Um, is that because, I mean, I, I know Beth is, um, special education, but so is, are we gonna be seeing a teacher increase as well if we're gonna extend the day? And?
So right now we have both Beth and Joanne in one room and Rose with a partnership with Seacoast Community School in another room. So we have two teachers in each room. Uh, we would look to, uh, instead of going out into the community as they are doing right now in the afternoons, for example, run a, uh, center base with two of those teachers as well. Um, so it, what, what it means is a restructuring of the use of the individuals. And this was also relying on a continued partnership with Seacoast Community, uh, School to have that additional staff member with our partnership with them.
Can you believe my son had Rose as a teacher in preschool? He's thirty two years old and he was three when he went. She's amazing, she's amazing.
So Rose will edit that out of the. It's a playback.
She's amazing. Okay, are there any more questions for this cost center? Okay, let's move on to one fifty one.
Uh, one fifty one is elementary special education. And, um, when I presented in December, I certainly think I brought forward that I can turn probably most primarily live or stamping at the elementary level just that, uh, we wanna make sure we're, um, identifying early needs and targeting them. And that's really where some pressure points have been felt this year. So the request is to add an additional elementary level person to support I U P required services. Um, in this cost center, we also are now reflecting E S Y expenses. We have always had E S Y expenses, but we've charged them, for example, to the people that work during the summer. Um, and so this is a more accurate portrayal of those services. Uh, we also have seen an increase in those expenses. We've tried to do a lot the last couple of summers for our students with special education needs to make sure that we were, uh, able to recoup skills of any regression that was happening. Um, and there is, uh, changes in the elementary cost for related services, uh, uh, for contracted services, um, based on what the current trend is. So I was able to look at our expenses and then project out where we needed some increases and where we needed some decreases.
Any questions? Carrie? E S Y is?
Oh, excuse me, I have, I always fault teachers when I use acronym. This is one of the lessons I give to new teachers using acronym when not everyone understands it really. It's extended school year. And it's not summer school. It's when an I U P team decides that a student needs to have their I U P services in the summertime to prevent any loss of skills, um, and that they can continue to move forward on their I U P goal. So it's not what some people think of as summer school, it is very specific to the student's I U P.
Okay. Anyone else for the question? I actually have a question. I noticed throughout the budget in all the areas that we're examining, you have the audiology services, the staff, um, fund out. I mean, is it worth it for us to hire an audiologist or? I just have that thought.
Um, I would add them up and I have generally been told unless it's getting to that eighty thousand dollar mark, it's not a whole time employee. Uh, I would say these are running in the thirtieth range, generally speaking. Um, and they're really, really, really hard to find. Uh, educational audiologists are very hard to find, I'll say, which specializes in school based service needs and the equipment that we utilize. Um, the addition of that service has been, um, there's, there's been an increased awareness of the need for that and the technology behind, uh, for example, that even a, a simple thing like a child wearing a hearing aid now might not be compatible with classroom systems or the tech that's being used. So we've had to really, uh, consider all of the technology that students access for something that might have been much simpler in the past, um, to just check an hearing and the batteries. Now it has to make sure that it's compatible with all the devices that are being used in all environments. So when we went remote, actually, that was, uh, kind of an uptick in making sure that students at home accessing with hearing loss um, could access on all the different devices, um, and all the different tools that are being used in an appropriate manner. So we had to purchase some equipment and, uh, sometimes just, yeah, I mean, change the bandwidth and change, uh, the codes that it's attached to and change equipment in some cases.
Wow. So.
I'm wondering that things that we're talking about contracting with an audiologist and S L O T, et cetera, et cetera, are those individually contracted based on the I U P? Or are we contracting or soaking up to some of the I U Ps and revisiting those on an annual basis? How are those contracts handled for services?
So, uh, I would say both end up happening. When we have an audiology across the district, I certainly try to find one provider so that there's consistency across the buildings. But for example, audiology is one that I have a contract with, an educational audiologist for any of the needs of the district. The I U P teams make the determination how much service they provide. And I just need to make sure the contract covers that. If it were to go over, we have to revisit the contract. Um, but for example, when things pop up and we weren't planning for them, then it might be that I'm going to wherever I can find that. Um, but for example, when things pop up and we weren't planning for them, then it might be that I'm going to wherever I can find that service. So for example, this year, speech, there are, um, three different agencies that are covering individual kids' needs that have come up unexpectedly. Um, and it was who I was able to find, provide the service and a timely manner.
To those longer term, are they revisited on an annual basis?
So where, every year, the I U P teams and the I, and the services are in those who drive, you know, map a service. But we always look to cover our stuff internally if we tend for those kind of existing things like speech and I T. Um, but audiology and P T apparently know we're going to be contracting, uh, for every year. If you're asking me like to bid out, we do not at this point.
Liz?
Um, so I just wanted to clarify a, a, a couple of things. So the, um, the B C B A, um, it would cost us seventy-two on the, back on the psychology page, but then we're sort of looking at, um, um, in the, in, in this cost center in elementary that there's, uh, the contracted services is that sixty-seven K number and then that sort of goes down to twenty K? Would the idea that there would be somebody hired on?
Yes, that would be if we were able to hire the second B C B A. Um, with the thought that right now we're at the point that we're over a second person even taking on all the contracted out services. Additionally, there are times when, for example, a student has come or moves into us with an existing relationship and we do try to kind of make a transition over. So we anticipate that there could be some addition, some contracting needs that would still exist.
Okay. And then I just want to clarify too on the nursing services. I saw the nursing services under P sort of went away for this year. So I'm assuming another child that's moving up. Um, and that's sort of the, that's where the amount comes from?
Uh, that, I can't be candid with all student needs, but, um, that's, sometimes that happens. And it's also sometimes we have movement students that land in the cost center that we started this year off. Now we know for next year, we need to put that service in.
Okay. And my last question is, um, I, you know, I know some schools have sort of integrated or, or sort of redistricted to sort of, not, I'm not saying I'm not throwing this idea out there at all, uh, but I guess I just wonder, there's some districts that have moved to having K through one in one school and, and two, you know, in another school. And I guess I wonder, you know, that it, to me, that seems like that would help have the services more concentrated. Is there a way that, um, is there a way that we could do that or share services? Um, it, you know, obviously we have three schools, we're servicing three schools, it's creating a, a cost, you know, each individual school, but um, I don't, I don't know if you could speak to that at all.
Certainly that design would, uh, it personally would be well beyond special ed for that consideration, um, to consider it. Um, what it could do, for example, is concentrate, um, speech or O T services at the younger years. Um, but overall, our numbers would still support the number of teachers that we have contracted that I'm proposing here. It's, um, thinking of a caseload of twelve to thirteen as a desirable point with the overall numbers of elementary students, we'd still kind of be in the ballpark for the same number of case managers. Um, so I'm, I'm.
You're kind of doing that already with some of the psychologists and whatnot.
Yes, there's certainly, we have, even our occupational therapists and speech, some of them travel. So, um, we try to make it as building bases possible because that's the most efficient and cost-effective for them not to lose time and travel. Uh, but we do have staff members throughout this budget that are, uh, in more than one building.
Is there any reason that it wouldn't benefit us to put beds out?
Um, I think it's, I think it's important to get a sense of what the area costs are for the service. And at any point, we feel that we're at a rate that we could look like we're in a better rate, we should be doing so. Uh, for example, our, uh, physical therapy rate, I think is one of the better rates I've heard in connections with just our, uh, directors that I know. What do you think? We're speaking, kind of that, that conversation on the side. Uh, and so I haven't felt the need that we're being overcharged in any area based on kind of the rates in the, in the region. Uh, on the, uh, monthly basis with the Seacoast area directors and then we have, uh, monthly statewide, and I get a sense of some of that just from that networking as well as sometimes it's shared, uh, amongst the group. What are the rates in your area? So we get a sense that people are being overcharged in any way. Um, I think there's also probably like national figures on what those costs are. But I typically go kind of what's in our area, what the costs are. And at this point, our contracts, uh, I'm not aware of any that I feel we're being overcharged for. Or that there's a, 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 a.
Anyone else before Liz goes for a second time? Okay, Liz?
Yeah, I just wanted to call you about the parent salaries, the increase that we had offered. I mean, was there any sort of uptick in that? And, you know, will we see that on the budget eventually and would there be any idea of continuing that? I mean, obviously we're using, um, uh, I don't know what the fu, where the funds that we're using as the funds are, where that's coming from, but the, um, the increase in parent salaries?
So we did an increase in substitute, uh, rates and we did get an uptick in applications to be a substitute in this past week even. We've had people coming in. But the actual salary of parents that are existing parents has to go through an negotiation process because it's a contract. Um, uh, certainly I'm hearing that all areas are considering rates for all of, of what's competitive and what can draw more attractive, um, candidates and more candidates, uh, because everyone in this area, so, and nationwide are feeling concerns for staffing.
Oh, Carrie, go ahead.
Sorry, why are, um, the F T Es often like pointing three, four, eight, six in the section? And are those fully benefited and?
So it's figured on an eight-hour day. Okay, most of our pairs are six point five hour days. And our seven hour pairs are eight point nine three. So I actually have a cheat sheet that gets it down to, it's a five and a half of what the F T E is based on an eight-hour day.
So I can't predict, I'm pretty sure it's six and a half, six and a half is a nine point three because it's compared to seven. Because the parents negotiate for a seven-hour day, so six and a half is a nine or three, a six is a point and six, yeah. The city doesn't do it the same way. And so every year when we blend our budget in the police-inspired government, the city finance department drag me down. They're like, okay, don't do this F T E thing again. Because for them, it's your full time or your part time. And for us, you know, you could be a point two-five or a point five-seven or a point eight-six, but it's all compared back to, uh, teachers, by the way, are an eight-hour day. So if you saw a teacher was eighty percent, it's a four-day basically, four schools, they group, you know, it's, so there's some, there's some underlying, underlying numeric assumptions that are there, but.
All of this is on nine months, right? It's one F T E, which is nine, like a school year. It's not, sorry.
So every contract.
Nine-month contracts, I think, on nine months, sorry.
And, and every, um, contract is a certain kind of paid and unpaid days. So parent educators have a contract of the number of days that they have to work, which is assigned there. Each, uh, Bethy, you know, it's figured on her daily assignment.
Thank you for entertaining my thrilling question. I know, I was just.
If somebody picked up on E S Y, it's that school year, and in, in, except a school year, there are additional days that would be paid for staff, both, both faculty as well as paraprofessional support, parent educators. Those, those show up and those would be on an hourly or per day basis, depending on what the program looks like, how much they were needed. So, so that would be added to the F T E because those are just miscellaneous hours, if you will, that they picked up.
And it should be noted that, I mean, parents, I think, are one of the most complicated because they're, they have a lot of extra little pay grades depending on what else they're doing outside of their family.
More questions? I do have a question. The, um, teacher of depth services, is that, I, I, I know I saw it on a couple of these cost centers. Is that a full-time position in the end or?
No, uh, it's, it's, um, very limited service, but for those students that need it, it tends to be, uh, uh, a long time. Uh, so, uh, teacher of depth would be, for example, a student that might need to learn some sign language as part of the communication and doing, you know, on a train if they're, um, injuring the school building. Um, they might need to train our staff on, uh, those items, but it is not, um, I want to say right now, we probably have seven students. Um, but again, they tend to be longer hours, particularly as students, students transitioning into the school system for some training uh, that's necessary. Very limited staff throughout the state. Um, and very, uh, hard to find people, uh, and that is a contracted service. I am not aware of any place other than maybe Manchester that has a staff member as a T O D. They tend to be in multiple places covering up the multiple districts.
Interesting.
It's not in your largest area for revenue loss, so maybe I'm jumping ahead. Sorry, I'm just, I'll have the revenue. You have on here guidance counselors no longer able to provide services, order a review, care or support.
So that is under the Medicaid, um, process. So guidance counselors are no longer recognized in the Medicaid school rules as an appropriate provider of a medical service. Um, they are not, uh, licensed through any department other than the Department of Education. So the new Medicaid rules have basically taken out any licenses by the Department of Education and say they have to be through a board, like board allied health. Um, so O Ts, P Ts, speech, et cetera, that have licenses outside of education are the ones that are recognized. Guidance counselors are not. Guidance counselors can and sometimes have training that is just aimed at social work services. So they have to get licensed as a social worker. Some of our guidance counselors have had that background training, some have not.
So, because we don't call them guidance counselors anymore, right? There's school counselors, right? So, so it's really about the licensure. Okay, that's, yeah, because I knew that some of our school counselors don't have that. Right? But some of our school counselors, I should say, there's also some people that are in our district that have that licensure that aren't school counselors, but also aren't under special ed, correct?
Right. For example, uh, our S A P, um, at the high school, um, has a license.
No, not, not, uh, staff.
So what has this done for you then? Is this, because if they used to handle a lot of that, how are we?
So restructuring, so guidance counselors or school counselors used to be able to support all processes in Medicaid from supervision of parents to doing orders, um, and all of that is completely out of the picture. So like one of the pieces that I think that we can drop, our ability to build for those services as well as put burdens in other places, for example, supervision of paraprofessionals for the work that is done cannot fall to a guidance counselor anymore. There is no way involved in the process. It would have to be a guidance counselor that also has social work licensure on the side. Or for example, our school psychologist, our R V C D As would have to be those supervisors of the paraprofessionals related to pay behavioral interventions. Um, and so it's shifted burdens and also reduced our ability to, uh, put in buildings.
Because the, the guidance counselors really used to also be that kind of intervention case manager advocate that works supposedly with the teachers around what kids might be for I U Ps or the kids could go to.
So, so the issue is about funding. They still have to do that. Our obligation is to provide services and do the supports that a student needs. It's just about we cannot put the funds to do.
So are they still sitting on a team's then?
Absolutely. Okay. So any, um, lack of ability to recruit monies afterwards does not negate our obligation to provide the services that the teams require, which in many cases do involve guidance, uh, guidance and counselors across the building.
Okay, thank you. Okay, shall we move on to, uh, what are we, we're on, the middle school special education, cost center one fifty-two?
So not, uh, significant changes here. Just wanted to know, we did, uh, try to best estimate our E S Y expenditures and then we had an increase in, um, our estimates for contracted services for next year. Um, uh, one of the additional note in the contract services, assistive tech services. I was seeing again, in addition to audiology needs where the technology is coming to play and driving some costs up, we're having an increase particularly as the students enter middle and high school that because of our reliance on technology, we're having to get evaluations around how to best access that, whether it's rhetorical issues, communication issues. And sometimes, um, we're getting requests for assistive tech evaluations and then consultation, uh, moving forward. So we're really seeing, I put it in at middle school because that's where I've seen the largest impact. And it really is as there's more reliance on the technology and wanting students to get familiar and comfortable using that as a tool as they move into high school, we've seen the largest impact there. Um, we certainly have some assistive techniques at elementary and the high school level. Uh, but this was the place that I felt we captured the best and was most accurate based on the last couple of years.
Any questions about the middle school special ed? Okay, so we move on to cost center one fifty-three, high school.
Uh, here the kind of note is, yes, why expenses? Um, so not significant changes.
Jeanette, do you, why do you see the increase of I U Ps at the high school level? Is it because of the integration of the other districts or do you think there's other things playing into that?
Um, are you asking from middle to high school?
Well, yeah, from my, on the number. It seems like we're kind of climbing up instead of like trying to get kids off of I U Ps. The numbers are climbing as they go up and so I'm just wondering, besides the integration of other districts.
Yeah, so from P M S, which is three grade levels, at the high school it's four grade levels, um, as far as that increase. And then we do have, uh, generally speaking, forty to fifty, S A U fifty students that join in at the high school level. Um, so I, uh, have another different side somewhere. Yeah, so at middle school, although it does include S A U fifty, that's generally between three and five students, uh, the towns that go there. Whereas at the high school, it tends to be between thirty-five and fifty, ten year near, um, attending from S A U fifty.
Marco, is Lister not listed here or is it combined with P H S?
Lister is not covered here as far as staffing. I believe they have a separate budget for that building.
They have a self, so, so Robert G. Lister's family is a self-funded, self-funded, careful. We're going to get to one sixty-five and you'll see this transfer that we make to support that program, but it's funded by tuitions. Otherwise, now a number of those kids right now, very few of those kids are, are course of students. So there's always that, uh, a feeder, if you will, it's about a transfer that we make to help fund that. But otherwise, it's, it stands as a self-funded program.
Um, Jeanette, do we have a transition coordinator at the high school for the, um, D D students?
We do not. Um, so we, we do have out of district and she works in the trend area of transition as well, uh, that we do through my grant. So she's not covered in this and she's part-time on an hourly basis. Now, her, she mostly covers out of district placements, but we generally each year have two to three students that have, um, maximize their time for high school and are still under the age of twenty-one that are doing community-based activities. And she generally is the one running those I U Ps, but the school teams are staying involved as well, but they notice students so off. But we do not have transition coordinator. Her title is out of district coordinator, um, and part-time paid through grants.
Okay.
That brings up a question I, I think I ask every year about grants. And why, you know, why don't we have these in the cost centers as far as the expense? But the revenue side that says grants or some other type of revenue, so we could see like the bigger picture.
So we could, I mean, we can, we can, yeah. A lot, a lot of it is still, I, I want to do, we hit COVID and so just, I haven't really dared to make much, no changes to the, to the process, but I, um, we don't, we don't generally keep our own revenues, which is part of it, right? Those are, they're city revenues. So for the new B A working, it's like, wow, okay, so I don't have to worry about these expenditures, not like other places where I've been. Although we do, we do have, um, listeners that sell funding, we have the federal grants that we, we talk about a lot. It's not just I D E A for special ed, but there's type one, two, three, four, there's others. Um, and so we could definitely come up with, uh, two oh seven is the tuition increase. And that's always hung out on the bottom of our monthly financial. Uh, but it's, it has a weird cycle to how it's, how it's funded and when it's funded. So, so that, that reporting doesn't always offer a much intuitive information that you could, you know, you could use to gauge how it's performing.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I ask that is some of these like kind of one, you know, they're pretty reliable. Like other ones come and go and it'd be nice to know, oh, you know, we've been using this resource and now you have to fund it, right?
Well, and so the Medicaid, Medicaid schools, they changed the rules so much, three or four times in that last cycle. And it really, it took eleven of them that were running five, six, she's going to say, you know, we're down to a fourth of it. It was running six hundred plus thousand, it's now not even hitting two hundred thousand a year or more. So that definitely, definitely is an impact. So yeah, let's, let's continue with more. I'll try to put some stuff together to see if it, if it scratches that, you know, the kind of information that is meaningful and then we could look at routinely.
If we can have a call center court, if we could just have a grant report to understand what dollars have been poured in and how long there. I mean, like the outdoor grant that's covering transportation for the outdoor program, like what is that going to run out? When do we need to start thinking about either restructuring that program so that we don't have to have transportation calls? Then we can use onsite outdoor resources or, um, you know, uh, renew the grant or, um, build it in or coming, coming down the park.
Is this a market that's worse? That won't really work. Oh, you know, we have my luck, but this is, that's a, that's a really good time. My most embarrassed to do this thing, think just thirty seconds, does it, it'll help, especially the movies. In your book, pick up, are we all looking at one fifty-three or still one fifty-two?
One fifty-three.
One fifty-three. So looking at one fifty-three, I just want you to look at the very first account, at the very first line. One fifty-three, so look at one fifty-three. I just want you to look at the very first account and the very first line, it's about teacher salaries. And I, and I don't know that we've ever said this, and I, I got, I had a conversation here two weeks ago, whatever else, with some of the new board members. And I said, they're trying to avoid the account numbers. It's really the narrative, the description ought to be more meaningful. And yet you're staring at all these numbers. So let me just say this, if you haven't already picked it up, the first two digits is fund, that's fund eleven, eleven is our general fund. And that's generally what this conversation is about because that's the tax generated, it's a tax funded, property tax funded portion of our budget that we give to the city and they bundle in with police and fire and general government. The next five digits are the cost center. And generally, if, as long as you're in general fund and we're looking at this book, the first two digits will be zero. It's just three digits we work with. So tonight we're talking about one fifty, one fifty-one, one fifty-two, one fifty-three. The next four digits are the function code. The function code is what drives my life in terms of reporting and dealing with the state in compliance reporting as well as, you know, end of year annual reporting. And everything twelve hundred is special ed. Everything that when you get in, look at the building budgets, the building, the principles and, most of that's eleven hundred, which is regular ed. But you'll also see within some of the special ed, there are twenty-one hundred, twenty-one ninety, twenty-one sixty. That's where some of these specials are, the OTs, the PTs, and so on, so forth. And, and the mark of, the mark of a detailed chart of accounts is how many of those twenty-one hundreds are broken out. And we've already talked about the teacher of the deaf, the audiology, talked about V C B A, which really ought to live in their own eventually. But for right now, most of them live at either twenty-one hundred ninety, twenty-one ninety, or in twelve hundreds. I was really trying to chase up to that next two digit, which is a thirty in this case here, because we're in one fifty-three, which is high school. Everything in the city, in the tens is elementary. So ten, one, zero is general elementary. Twelve is your dog Daryl, fourteen is your little harbor, fifteen is your, is your new Franklin. Twenty is middle school and thirty is high school. If you get beyond thirty, most of that is district-wide stuff, so forties and nineties that show up in the budget. When you get to one of those counts, you go, I wonder what this is for? Oh, it's a ninety. They're spending this district-wide. And Nathan's got to figure out after the fact so he can do his state reporting, because he's got to break it up by each building later. And so part of why this is just getting thicker and thicker, this document is year over year is because we keep adding more detail to break out to the building specific, so that we can stand up to equity statements that the state is asking us to and the federal government is asking us to produce, and so that we can satisfy our state reports. The last few digits, I won't even bore you with it, but then there's a gap and there's four more digits, and that's that account I was talking about where the O one hundred series is all the salaries and the O two hundreds benefits and O three hundreds and beyond are the operating stuff down below. Again, that's tedious and it's elementary, but if you haven't ever heard it, it might make this a little more.
What are you just trying to key on the front?
And someday, someday we'll just give you the definition of the top of the ground.
What's your level of satisfaction on the account numbering?
My level?
Yeah.
The account numbering, the accounting system, then I got all, you know, we could, you know, we need a lot more money if we're, if I'm going to make things that I like them.
I thought, so, so that numbering system, for example, my IDEA grant doesn't start with eleven. It starts with twenty-two, twenty-two for the grant, so there's a whole difference. It's not anywhere here.
For reporting over all those twenty-two, it's something we just, we go off of.
Okay, so, um, one, this is a comment and I don't, my knowledge is outdated, but I'm, um, I'm a nurse practitioner and I'm also a budget geek and raised by my family. But, um, one of the things I know schools in Massachusetts have done a long time ago is establish a school health center. And, um, then a lot of the, the health services that were available were provided under that. And so they were billing at a hundred percent as opposed to the fifty percent. I don't know if it.
So it's not the medical space, not a community service?
It's an integrated medical, uh, medical service integrated within the school system. So that was sort of my question before, but.
So I, I, I'm trying to that, maybe I'm not familiar with Massachusetts Medicaid school. I know it's completely different than New Hampshire Medicaid school, particularly with changes that occur. And I am aware that if we have students that attend out of district placements in Massachusetts, that those schools were not through our New Hampshire Medicaid school billing because their rules are some different. So I don't know if a Massachusetts comparison can be made or not. I honestly just don't have the answer to that. But New Hampshire Medicaid schools, and I have worked in Maine and Kansas where each state is so completely different. Actually, so that, um, I don't know that they would allow us to try to make a medical facility and build differently because they're like.
But, and then, sorry, I have one.
No, we're good.
Um, and then one conversation that Nathan and I have, or a few of us have had, was just around, um, like I have grants at UNH. We have, um, encumbered costs. We have like all of these kind of supervision methods. And then I was surprised that that wasn't the case, um.
And like the ID grant?
But, yeah.
So the process that we go through is the DOE is supervising that and approving all the activities that we have to submit. Um, and honestly, it's been pretty much the same because we have the same amount of money.
So managing those grant budgets is not a challenge with the reporting systems that you currently have?
I, I would say I have not found it, it hurts a part of my position, um, except we take some times. It takes some time. Well, at one point we had about six of them lying at the same time. That has just kind of settled down. They extended some dates. So right now I have three, uh, and it's much more manageable when the time when there were six across five or six years that you're trying to figure out how to pay down. Um, so, so, um.
I, and I put that out there because of the conversation that we had, that, that I think investing money in a district to m- modernize reporting systems in whatever way that is, I'm not, no expert on what that is, is a cost savings overall. And so that, I just wanted to kind of throw it out there to you because.
So one of the things that I, I, I fault the city not at all, like I've had, I got a great working relationship with city finance and I appreciate how all this all works. But our software is tied in city and it's a city solution. It's not a school solution. And there are things that, that we give up or that we miss, uh, that I've experienced in other schools where you were buying just for a school. But in our case, you kind of deal with property and assessment, tax, and you know, there's all water and sewer billing. So the city's got to have an all encompassing solution that, that really works for basically, and I, and I respect that. Although, and I think they're open to talking about how we can make sure we've got better tools. But don't talk to Courtney Richards from CTE when she comes in, mention the grants and Courtney's, Courtney does, uh, they're, they're not huge grants that she gets, but she's really great at chasing, you know, chasing funding realities. And then what she's run into that we've struggled with in the accounting software is she might have multiple, multiple supply lines with different purposes. But the way it gets aggregated and collected or carried, if you will, in the accounting software, it all looks like one account. So then when we're billing out against, I will say, I'm looking for reimbursement, if we don't get the right, if we're not keeping track of it going in effectively, we could use some greater levels of detail and we could use some, you know, some, some easier processing, uh, processing. And it, it doesn't seem to be there, but again, part of it is we got to get fully staffed and, you know, time and outside COVID will help. But I appreciate where, I appreciate where your suggestions are headed because some of these things could be a whole lot easier. There's a lot of man hours that go in there trying to chase the beat.
I think too, so like COVID riots point of, of like wanting certain things, like in a certain system, that would not be work on you. That would be, uh, generally, and so I think just acknowledging that that's the system, that's the way it is and this is why it's good. And, and also that if, um, we're requesting, you know, if we're requesting things, acknowledging the workload that that takes, even, you know, quantifying it to say like, is this a, a forty-hour valuable reporter? Or, you know, this report's a thirty-minute, whatever, you know, I, I think that's important so that we have like a marker of how much time everything is taking.
Well, sincerely, I think I made the comment, I love it when people tell me what the hypothesis is so I can go chase data that I think is really applicable. Rather than people asking me for a whole lot of data and then I work to try to dig it all up so they can go through and see if there's any noise there. Uh, it, sometimes that could be a lot of work to grab data that they go, well, no, I didn't find anything meaningful. Wow, that was, that was big. So as often as there's a hypothesis, certainly, like I've already heard that a couple of times, we can chase, we can chase some meaning, some meaning in this and, and definitely pull out some stuff, but that's, it's, it's not as easy as it should be in some ways.
To Carrie's point, I think she raises a good point, that there does need to be a conversation had with the city. I'm not sure if they understand the behind-the-scenes software that we have to be connected to. I mean, we've had so many conversations in the communication community around the limitations of how we can put out communications and, and just access points, tracking points and stuff, because we have to be reliant of being tied to the city. So I think it's not just in finance, that there could be some upgrades to help the access to the school district. I think that's kind of a conversation that could be had across the many departments.
And that's more, and that's a broad, a broader conversation, I think, if I didn't finish saying it. The city on the finance side has been putting dollars away in the C I P in, 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 in pursuit of getting a certain dollar value that they can go out and, and make purchases, implement something.
Okay.
And, you know, if I'm lucky, I'll retire first. I can, you know, if you live it, you know, those are, those can be big too, so.
I have a question about this cost center, um, but I did want to, to Carrie's point about student, um, health centers. I know that some of us were just sending an email that they're actually going to be offering ones. I don't know if that's sort of what you were getting at, but it'd be interesting to see how that plays out and, and what that might be for us in New Hampshire, um, uh, and.
And I, I think two different conversations. One is, is that helping Medicaid land? I'm not so sure. But is it, uh, benefit of students to have a public health center? That's a whole different conversation related to Medicaid billing. I just would have to do a lot more investigating to see if there's any increase in the revenue roll. Um, but student health centers, a conversation of is that what the community needs and what the students need? Um, different conversation than for purposes of Medicaid billing, could we gain revenue in any way?
Makes sense. And so the question I had about this cost center was that there's only one para at the high school.
It's not, this is a case where it's, it's covered elsewhere. So is that, uh?
So the tuition and fees, tuition and fees fund had its genesis largely, that it was a, a place where they put all of the special ed costs related to services that might be billed to S A fifty against those tuition contract. So a lot of them are still there and we take a portion of the S A fifty tuition to fall against those, fall against those costs. That's also where Medicaid billing went because they ultimately put Medicaid, Medicaid, Medicaid reimbursable services there because then it would wash away, um, as opposed to having those things fluctuating in, in a way that would impact the city's budget and the city's revenue stream. So they stuck them in this tuition and fees, um, fund, which is in fund twenty-seven, and we call it two oh seven. It's cost center two oh seven, Oliver High School. I, we don't, and I to this day don't know why, there's just one para that's still stuck in this cost center because the rest of them are all in two oh seven.
Okay, so, so in some area, there's some sort of, um, covering, like, I guess it would be helpful to sort of know what's kind of shifted. Like another thing I noticed was, you know, there's no V C B A contracted services for the high school. Is that, are those just not being offered at the high school or is that just?
We were anticipating we'd get our second position, that that level would be able to be covered by the second position that was added.
Okay.
The only place that we would anticipate possibly contracting out for would be at the lower level.
Okay, so some of the tuition that we're receiving from the high school is taking away some things from this, which includes the paras. And is there anything else that sort of was thrown into that or will we see that on a separate, um, separate document here?
That's a separate, so I don't know, I think off the top, there is, there's some to, to.
There's, there's teaching that and that as well.
All right.
Any other questions on the high school portion? Okay, let's move on to speech. Cost center one fifty-six.
Speech one fifty-six, um, again, anticipating, well, currently experiencing higher than we can support speech needs. Uh, and also, uh, not being able to do the early intervention at K one. In addition to some projection of some needs for next year, we would like to add a full-time speech position. Uh, and here we put it in under Don Bureau and New Franklin. That's where we're seeing the, uh, greatest, uh, needs expanding beyond our full-time people in those buildings. We would look at that at the beginning of next year, make sure that's where the need is, as we do at the start of any year. Because at this point in time, we, we should project that, but we could have moves and shifts. Um, so we make our best estimate of where that need would land, but we would look across the district and determine where the position would best be utilized. Uh, but likely split between buildings would be the, um, U F T would be not located in any one building.
Any questions from anybody else?
I, I have a quick question. When somebody's split, did they have an office somewhere like it's, or did they, they just like sort of carrying their stuff with them back and forth? Or having some stuff in the special ed office at the school? Like how does that work?
Um, I, I can say now that, uh, every one of our, uh, buildings does have a location for a speech office.
Okay.
Um, it, it ends up being two people. It actually becomes more of an issue in that you might have one speech office and then you have to find times to, for example, see two kids with different articulation needs in places where you can hear those sound errors. So some, uh, likely would be shared office space, but service location might be created in some of our buildings that are more pressed for space. Meaning they have to find an empty classroom at the time that the kid needs the service in order to provide that service. Uh, they generally might transport limited materials between buildings and they certainly share things like testing kits across the district. Um, but generally they're not running around with a rolling cart, like I have experienced in some of my previous jobs where their car is their office and they're transporting. We currently do not have that with our, uh, staff that travels. We certainly take items, but not their entire, uh, working and functioning.
Yes, oh, Jeanette, um, the early literacy that you have covered here, is, is any of that, can any of that be covered by any of our reading specialists in the buildings? So if they're not having like articulation problems or word retrieval problems or otherwise, that might be covered specifically with the speech language?
Yeah, so, um, I would say actually it really worked to differentiate what is, um, necessary, that a, um, speech language provider needs engineering or a language need versus a reading development need, where many of our case managers and special educators and many of our regular education teachers are quite cursed in developing reading skills. So those need really pumps that out to make sure that the interventionist of this level are utilized when it is a language issue. And part of that is through the evaluation process potentially, if they really can't teach it out. Um, but we certainly have, uh, early reading needs that can be addressed by classroom teachers, general educators, and certainly interventionist reading specialists as well as special educators.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to OT, number one fifty-seven.
And OT, a very similar situation to speech. Um, it's, uh, generally occupational therapists, uh, is less frequent I E Ps however. So our ask here is for, uh, we currently have two full-time and one part-time. And our ask would be that we move to three full-time staff across the district to support all needs. And that would be in keeping with those of the demand that we're seeing this, this year, as well as anticipation of potential increases next year. Um, so moving to three full-time people would be your request.
Is that because it's, you know, it's cheaper than contracting that position out at this point because of the demand?
Um, yes, and more stability and again would allow, uh, a little bit more of that building base where classroom teacher has a question as a person more readily available to ask than having to say, we need to contract out for the extra time and trying to find that. Um, it, it's still, uh, staff will be across buildings in this model as well, but a little more time in buildings to allow for that.
So just a follow-up question. I mean, I think speech and language we see is, is in high demand, certainly OT as well, but even, I just cause my kids have some of these issues, um, even more. So I guess I'm just wondering when those numbers decline, um, you know, how do we use these positions that are now going to be on our payroll that may not have the high demand to need three, for instance, and ten?
How, how are you showing that tree at which they, at a point in time, it's going to be declining in the near future? So, um, um, I don't know at what point that would come into play. Uh, if anything, I think then we'd be utilizing staff or more early intervention. Is it true or negative right now that they're, this year have not enough to go into kindergarten, first grade classrooms? It's really the I E P services only that they're delivering. Um, so like if your question is like, at what point in the future is the demand going to decrease? I don't have an answer to that and I don't, I still anticipate it being the next thirty-five years.
I guess I just would want to look at that as, we also look at our, I mean, I totally agree with you a hundred percent. But as we're looking at enrollment, if that's a decline for the three to five time period as well, or just, just thinking about some of these more specialized positions that once they're on our payroll and can't be contracted out, they're not as easy to move around in the district, um, because they're so niche, so.
Any other questions?
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I just want to follow up to that. I guess, I guess what I'm hearing from you is that, um, you're saying that all the OTs are sort of strapped to IEPs right now? And if they weren't strapped to IEPs, we could offer early interventions in somebody's elementary school.
I think they could be a resource beyond, right now it's strictly special education services versus, uh, more building-based resources. Things like sensory needs certainly could be applied to classrooms at all grade levels and ideas and trainings for staff. And right now they have not had the ability to, uh, be utilized in that manner. Uh, they're strictly I E P services.
Okay, but that would have to be built into the contract upfront, right? The lan, that language to put their job to some degree, right?
Um, we can align them however.
Yeah, and 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 there were times they have been embedded at times in our kindergarten, first grade classrooms, working on PLC teams. It's just now it's contracted so that contracted in this way. Um, so really all they have time to do is IEP service.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to adaptive services, number one sixty.
Uh, adaptive services. Sorry, is that? Uh, ESL is not under my review anymore, so I I I use the cover. Um, um, one sixty, the adaptive services is really um a combination of final fours. Uh, the biggest increase that I asked for here was certainly seeing a need uh as of the last couple of years for interpreter services um uh for student needs, but um more so for families that are coming back when we're having EHD pay to have interpreters present so that they can fully uh engage as well as documents that sometimes we have translated. So I ask for that to be increased slightly based on um uh what I'm aware of. What what I'm finding is sometimes we handle those buildings as well, so this is what I'm trying to do at the district level, but I certainly see an increase in that area.
Any questions?
I don't know what my.
Yes, Lisa.
Um, you could say question, but is adaptive PE under adaptive services with PE or where is?
Uh, adaptive PE, I believe she is under the physical education. She is a PE teacher.
So that's an IEP service, but it's covered in the call center for Jeff. I think that's where I think.
I don't know.
Sorry.
That's a great question, because I can't understand, because that's where it's always at.
That's okay.
And I haven't, and I haven't moved it because there's a whole section here for adaptive PE and there's a salary section, but she might end it. So somewhere along the line, there's something, there's something that drove them to move her because she's back, now she's in one twelve.
She's fantastic, by the way.
Yes. She's been here a long time, so she's, I don't know if she knows if she's been funded in different call centers, but the infrastructure is there, we can move her back, it's all right. Haven't done it yet.
Taught my son how to write like. Please, Liz.
Um, I just want to clarify, so the um the interpreter, uh ESL is in a separate call center, but the interpreter service in the document translation, is that just for special ed documents or is that for all documents that would relate to ESL essentially as well?
Um, both, I mean, that's this is where it lands, yeah. Um, mainly what I've been involved with is translating things like special education documents or final four plans that need to have a translation or interpreter present at the meeting is the most common thing. Uh, we utilize this such even recently for parent-teacher conferences where a parent has made a request that they need an interpreter to come. Uh, and so it's kind of it's anytime we want to have a place that we can pay for the interpreters uh for any any scenario that comes up that we need interpretation.
Okay. So. All right. So in classroom, language translations doesn't fall under you anymore that's under ESL, is that correct?
I mean.
You need someone in the classroom, that's like.
Yeah, well, I mean, and and are we providing that? It's, I mean, I I'm just thinking about Colleen Lepel's, you know, wonderful uh presentation she did. It's great that she can come down to an elementary school classroom, but there's other classrooms obviously across the district that have kids that don't speak. So how how, where is, where is that in the call center and who handles that now?
It's under ESL, which is. If you say that. So each said, they're not necessarily translators, but you know, certainly a lot of, I'm going to go deal out what the ESL is and I'll get to that. But they they work with the students to integrate them, plus for the help of acquired language and the custom routines and everything. So we have like, we should fill that through and um and middle and high.
So are we meeting the time where they are when they first come to the district? So if they're speaking only say Spanish, should we, are we meeting them with someone that speaks their language at all? Or are we just expecting to put in an English-speaking person to help integrate them and only bring them to the point of learning English? Because it seems like that would create a lot of frustration in the classroom, which seems like a play call in their adaptive services to me. So so my trend previously was ESL teachers work with the families to make a plan for that child. Um, and help us integrate them and it's team of people working at each school, not each individual student.
Oh.
Uh, many times when we are new to them, is is that's a term that you utilize in ESL. Um, they will end up having to get some extra supports in some manner, but generally I would say there's not a side-by-side one-to-one interpreter throughout their school day. It's a pair that's working with them or some other support. And sometimes it's, we're trying to figure this out, kid arrives, family arrives, we're having meetings to try to figure out what's in the plan. Make sure that the students getting into the classroom and being able to access them and it's different for each student. It's also different depending on age level and the development level. Because a high school student is going to be treated differently as far as their development level or social interactions than a kindergarten student. And even language research and this is again well beyond me. Our ESL teachers are excellent and they'll come up with their plans and really work with families and the school-based teams to make sure that the student is feeling comfortable and being successful as soon as possible. Uh, hope we sometimes have kind of surprises where it takes a little while to get that system in place for the student that makes it successful. We've had a couple this year, um, that we don't get a lot of notice before they're here and trying to support them. Uh, and sometimes it has that sudden increase of staff for a short period of time or some kind of thing for that transition. Um, again, this isn't under me anymore, but I'll still get phone calls to try and work with those families and then kind of hand them off to the to the schools as I gather information. I bet two this year that would be directly to me just because my name was student support. And then I get to the ESL teacher and some time at some meeting uh with an interpreter to say what's going on here? Uh, what's the plan for the future and working on an individual basis with a lot of factors involved.
So if it's the ESL teacher, but the pairs are being paired with them, why did it get separated outside of your call center? Why wouldn't it still fall under you if your team is also coming to the table to?
Generally specialized, not at the table, it's not a special education situation.
But the pairs are still under your.
So you're, they're the ones being paired with the student, right? So we have, how many pairs in the district, nine-ish and about eighty-five of them are under me. We have library pairs and ESL pairs that I've not supervised.
It may not be, you know, necessarily a parish. A lot of times interpreter services are used at the the outset with registration and things like that through the tariffs. We we have such a diversity of languages that come to us, it's not practical to have a polyglot in each in each building. So um we tend to contract that that part out, less than something except with Spanish.
Yeah, we we certainly have some other assets, we speak other languages, but certainly not the third boss that.
Right.
I mean, across the last few years.
I remember a few years ago, they said that, Ian will remember this, we had twenty-two different languages in our school system.
That's definitely.
And there were Chinese and um, so yes, a really weird dialects that come from different countries. So um, it's an interesting conversation, some of them start right here without notice.
Right, right, right. Yeah, and there are interpreter services and agencies that sometime uh have to really search to find us an interpreter of the languages that have come to us. Sometimes sometimes we even set up a meeting and take a week or two for the interpreter services we use that reach out nationwide to find excellent language and translation in an appropriate manner. So um, there's some process, there's some logistics involved in making sure that there's a appropriate plan and action at place.
Um, you don't, I mean, do they still have like those, so the courts have call lists? If you call a number and it gives you somebody that does like a translation for you, obviously this is more in-depth, but is there any sort of setup like that for schools?
Uh, no. Um, uh, I mean, I can't, uh, when I have arranged it, it's contact with an agency that we use. Um, and it takes them sometimes a little while to get things, usually they need at least seventy-two hours. And if it's a more hard-to-find language, then it may be uh longer than that.
Okay.
Uh, they also cover things like uh American Sign Language, so there's all those kinds of languages spoken as well as uh American Sign Language.
Okay, let's move on to out-of-district, one sixty-five.
Um, I just made a general statement here that uh increased in tuition transportation service costs. I did do a separate sheet which discusses more about out-of-district uh processes. Uh, this is always a very large call center. Um, and so there's a completely separate sheet called out-of-district overview that just gives some background of those processes. Were laid into a determination that a student may need out-of-district class. Um, I'll also put a note that we support RJLA, which has already been mentioned here today. Um, and we try to make sure, given that these are individual students, that we don't have too much identifying information. So it's listed as like placements one, two, three. Um. In the tuition lines, if you see the number four oh two next to it, that is if a student has court placement. And then there are some funds, uh, once they reach a certain cost point, the state uh would take over the cost for uh any educational expenses at that point. So in the notes that I call other notes, when you get to the call center, one sixty-five, I did update the current rate. So in court order placement, which is, when I say four oh two, that's a chapter of four oh two reference in New Hampshire rules. Anything that's above three times the state average, which is now fifty thousand, seven hundred plus change is paid by the DOE. And then for root, high-cost expenses, and that's out of district or in district students that um we are servicing at a high level. Um, anything at three point five times the average, we're eligible for eighty percent reimbursement from the Department of Education. That is after the fact, so whatever we pay this year, we have to submit tons of information. Uh, and then it's what we pay the next school year. Anything above the ten times, which uh this year is one seventy-nine, eight, um, could be eligible for a hundred percent reimbursement. And that's gift to state has those funds. Um, the last couple of years we've gotten, we've gotten the eighty percent and a hundred percent um of the allowable costs. Uh, but in years past, it has been as well as sixty percent of that eighty percent or sixty percent of the hundred percent. Um, the last couple of years they have been able to pay after eighty and a hundred percent rate.
So in other words, this one that's listed as four hundred fifty thousand, we need to get a little percent of that?
We, we would, it's anything about the sixty-two, we're eligible for eighty percent.
Oh, okay.
And once you hit the one seventy-nine, you're eligible for a hundred percent over that, so it's two pieces of it.
So like four hundred, you would be getting two hundred and fifty thousand if you were to take that, if.
All the IP.
If on the review, everything including the wording and the dates and the, yeah, but they they're in the business of disallowing is the phrase. I I go by, I go by her office and her admin, Christine December grumbling, but disallow, disallow, disallow. So they struggle, but and the biggest frustration about this is only the court order four oh two that she just described cuts off. And and the state says, that's it, you've paid to that point, send me the bill and the state pays the bill from there. But for all of the rest, we have to pay in full in the first period, you know, this year. And the reimbursement comes after, after they beat us up, the reimbursement comes in the subsequent period, so the next year. And and unfortunately, it doesn't come, it doesn't come in a timeless so that you could really manage expectations about it. Because we won't find out until we're we're into the next year what the number is. So they do tell us, they do tell us the tax rates any time. They confirm generally what they expect that number is going to be. That's something the Department of Revenue has pressured the Department of Ed to deliver on because sometimes those numbers can impact what the tax rate would be.
What is that four hundred fifty thousand, is that, I mean, I know you can't get specifically, what kind of placement is that?
So generally speaking, costs um over two hundred thousand would likely be a residential placement.
Okay, okay.
Uh, across the board, there's.
Full-time, twenty-four seven.
Correct.
Any other questions, Liz?
Um, just, I have a couple of questions. So um, for that four hundred fifty thousand, um, that's hitting us, but I mean, are we going to get reimbursement for Medicaid? If it's a residential placement or or family, if it's residential?
We would have two sources of potential reimbursement, both Medicaid potentially. And again, that has to, on the Medicaid overview, all those pieces be met for the services that are provided um for any of these uh students. And then and then potentially get the special education aid cost. So there are two potential sources for any of these students that meet above these costs of Medicaid reimbursement or special education aid reimbursement. Depending on the profile of individual students and the IEPs involved.
So we're going to see a hit here, but somewhere later, there's going to be, it's going to come back to us and to in a Medicaid section? Is that, is that how that works?
So so Medicaid can happen uh within the same year, special ed aid will be the following school year.
Okay. And then so for like Beckett and Stetson, um, those amounts that are on there, um, are those the full tuition amounts? Or is that with some sort of reimbursement, um, you know, more of like a program, I guess?
So the costs that are here, the only ones that we cap are the four oh two saying that that is as much as we have to pay. The others are anticipated costs.
Okay, so.
Revenue included, without reimbursement for either Medicaid, that would be reflected in a different section, this would be the cost.
Okay, so those are our, those are our.
Anticipated cost for those.
Okay.
Other than where it goes four oh two, then we did cap it, knowing that we generally are able to uh provide the documentation necessary, get the stuff. Having costs come to us and it goes to the state at that point directly.
Okay, but the amount that we see right here factors in whatever, what are we into?
Things that the state has as a rule, right, is we have to grossly appropriate. So you can't spend revenue, you, the state, the city gets it, right? So we have to budget for appropriation for the fullness of what the checks are, we might have to cut. So only the four oh two caps what we might spend. The others, the others may fall under a category where we we are able to see reimbursement at the start of the year, but we have to budget to spend for us.
Okay, I just want to clarify though, the amount that we're seeing for like somewhere like Stetson or Beckett with the four oh two next to it. The amount is, is the cap or we haven't seen the cap yet? I mean, that there, I guess I just want to clarify that this is the amount we're going to actually pay? Or we still have an opportunity for reimbursement of those?
We put in fifty-six thousand.
Yeah.
As a number for four oh two.
Yeah.
Knowing that that, for example, an IEP is assigned by a parent, we can't, we have to wait until it gets signed by the parent. So we might have costs slightly above the fifty thousand. So we thought that was an appropriate number of the cost we might anticipate. Uh, the state, for example, if if things aren't in order, then we have to submit everything in order before they start paying after that fifty thousand.
Okay.
And those that are coded as four oh two, we don't expect any reimbursement on those.
Okay, because that's our, that's basically.
We pay the invoices up to the point that we submit, we meet that fifty thousand with the appropriate paperwork behind it. And then we don't see the invoices after that, they go directly to the state.
I wish they were all like that.
Correct.
But only the four oh twos get capped and then we send the bills to the state, the rest we have to pay and we can submit for reimbursement later.
Okay, so that fifty-six or fifty-two, sorry, the fifty-six amount is the amount that we may be on the hook for that we would submit for reimbursement?
No, that's.
No reimbursement with four oh two. There's no reimbursement.
No reimbursement on the.
If you look at the one that's fifty-six under four twenty, maybe like specifically that one?
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to clarify that, so when we have a cap at a at a at a four oh two, um, and and in the four twenty, I think it's supposed to be four oh two, so it'll type over there. But when we have a cap at four oh two, we are definitely on the hook for that amount, but we could submit that for reimbursement for at some point.
No.
No, okay, so that's the amount that we're actually paying, correct, okay.
Yes.
Um, so to clarify, we're spending these funds without knowing whether or not we're going to receive reimbursement for, or without knowing what quantity of them we're about to receive reimbursement for?
Generally speaking, it's, we're federally mandated, federally mandated to provide those services, equipment, IEP regardless of the cost. But the state has programs funded through federal and and state dollars. The state has programs that may reimburse us for some of them, but there's a, there's an application process where we have to compile all of our evidence and documentation and submit to the state for their review and consideration of what they will reimburse.
So is there like a simple criteria for that? I know, I want you to like.
No. Not that I've been able to do this.
All right, it's just kind of.
Because I never seem to get as much as I hoped that we're going to get.
Okay.
So so related to that question, this is going to provide called Medicaid School Overview, tells you the process for Medicaid reimbursement. And there are eight steps to even potentially get reimbursement that all have to be in complete order for you to receive the money. And then if you have an audit, they can come and take the money away if they found out that you missed any of those steps for the reimbursement that you received. So that's just one piece, there's, we're talking about Medicaid as a potential reimbursement and then there's special education aid, which is actually a work of a process, um, as far as the amount of documentation. You have to have every piece of paper in order, invoices have to match the wording in the IEP from the billers. Sometimes we don't even have control over things like that, like if a company bills us and uses the wrong wording and it doesn't match our IEP, we'll have to request, can you please change the bill so we can submit it for reimbursement? And so it's a lot of paperwork uh involved in the process. And so it's a lot of paperwork uh involved in the process.
Kim, did you have a question?
Um I, yeah, I was just gonna say, um, you know, the overall summary, I don't know if they always make you go first in these budget hearings, but thank you for all your time and patience. I would recommend, I would re- I would recommend you always go first, but um but I can understand if you are unavailable next time. Um so in summary, everything here is me based, like there's enough, there's no, this is pretty much to maintain status quo and move forward and provide the the basic services we need to. Is that correct? Like there's.
So one sixty five is related to our.
I meant overall, all of your centers, really.
Yes, this is to legally proceed with providing IP services and the projections that I anticipate. And even those cost effective in doing so rather than have to pay unexpectedly for things like contracted services. So things like uh we make the request for an additional speech provider is actually meant to be more cost effective than looking next year to unexpectedly have to find contracted services at a higher rate. And so it's anticipating needs and also those cost effective ways to cover those IP services.
Oh, um I'm just curious, the RJ, RJ LA support, it's like three fifty two, eight seventy one. So they have their separate budget, but this falls, this, these dollars fall under you. So.
It's part of the special ed costs because because the cost of that, it's a special ed program. And so the costs there need to be allocated out of the special ed line. And so we put it, we put it here, but it's a transfer over into the budget that Nancy speaks to, which you then before you're talking about Lister and those people and the programs. And there are, there are three big, three, three big pieces of the funding stream, out of district, private tuitions, our support, and then a piece of the tuition dollars that come from um SE fifty, you know, a piece of that goes there because those are all, it's a high school program. So we chart, we 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 assign it a piece of a high school.
So when Nancy shows her budget, she'll have, this will be built into that from being pulled from here?
That is part of her revenue stream. So it's, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then last question, and I'm not even sure for privacy if you can answer, is can you tell just how many eighteen to twenty one students we're currently supporting?
Oh, I I did look at that prior. We generally have three or four that are eighteen to twenty one since I've been here consistently. I just keep um.
So the transition programs, five students?
Uh so you are kind of looking, uh let me find it.
And.
That would include not only eighteen to twenty one year olds, but you can have transition services occurring earlier.
Okay.
So if the IP team decides this is a student that may be five years out of community-based experiences, it could start actually any transition services can start at age fourteen, based on the individual students. It's a section of the IP that starts getting looked at at age fourteen and has to be in place by age sixteen for all IP students. For some students, it does require more community-based services. So that, those costs um would include our eighteen to twenty one year olds that aren't attending our traditional high school or community-based services for anyone in middle school or high school that the team decides it's necessary.
Right.
So a general question, it looked like all, everything ended up in the proposed budget that was on for less, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
See, it's actually one case manager. Oh, yes, it's, that's right. She had talked about two case managers.
Okay, so that, but that still wasn't part of that, right? Really ask her. Okay, so that's what I was asking. It was sort of wish, what what dropped off the wish list?
Uh so one additional case manager, and that was from the question of uh for next year, is this an appropriate move that would cover our IP services? And we thought we could. Um uh again, we have to look at that each year to see, are we still increasing? Uh that's certainly a concern in that everyone's had given the referrals, like at what point is it gonna tip? We believe next year that one case manager would be um appropriate um and and necessary.
Okay, do you wanna go to the back page of this? Cuz, oh, I'm sorry, please, I didn't see the hand.
No, it's okay. Um I guess this is a little bit of a forward-looking question, but given how many more students anecdotally receiving the potential health issues, I'm just curious, as you're looking at hard in this, how much you might anticipate it still over into special ed, IP Bible service, if you want to catch up with anxiety or depression, or maybe even more placements out even temporarily? Maybe that's not hitting Portsmouth directly, but I'm just curious.
I I would say we are seeing that. I guess I personally, and with my special ed teams, is trying to move the conversation away from every mental health or medical concern is in the special education arena and trying to uh make it more of a general education conversation of how do we best look for our buildings to promote success for all of our students when things are more commonplace of diagnoses? Uh anxiety being a common one that's occurring across the nation, the state, and certainly in our district, rather than it having to be that our only system of support is special ed, how do we move the conversation to more supports in every building in some fashion, whether that be our counselors and the systems of support, or how do our um psychologists and B C B A support those teams in a manner that it doesn't have to go through an IP team, which can be a very restrictive process? So trying to change the conversation a little bit so that it doesn't have to be where the one stop where you get support. And uh certainly buildings are open to that conversation. Um and I would think then that all the costs associated with the needs may not be found in my budgets. It could be that we begin to talk, is that through the guidance budget? Or is that uh at the middle school, they wanna add this particular support system? So I am very promoting, we're not gonna be able to handle what we're seeing.
I guess that's what I was wondering, if you have P D L and guidance that are maxed out or psychologists that are maxed out, where we need to provide more support in the budget so that those needs are being met?
You mean from a mental health perspective?
Yeah, yeah.
Because the one thing that I.
Cause they don't own the IP.
IEPs do provide is some accountability, right? Cause they, you can track it at the, it's like letter to the law. So how can you build that up where if it's gonna be outside that letter to the law accountability, but still have the same case management ability to it?
And but there's also criteria to get in special education, and it has to be identified, there's ability and a need for specially designed instruction. And some medical health services certainly aren't specially designed instruction. There are need for therapeutic supports that uh aren't best served in an IP fashion. Uh for example, if they're scripted twice a week, thirty minutes a week counselor, it might be better that there's someone or a student can go to rather than a scripted uh service related to an IP goal. So I think you have to have additional resources and additional arenas. Um but yes, there is certainly accountability tied to IP goals. Just some mental health services aren't best served through an IP process.
Liz.
Oh, yeah. So I'm trying to decipher, what is T and F support? I mean, that's a huge chunk, obviously.
Well, so that's that tuition and fees account that I talked about, and we push dollars over there um because, because
The revenue.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's part of the revenue stream of of two oh seven because of they're serving all of our students. And so again, if I go back, historically, the way that it was used was a lot of, like, high school is where we have our tuition students, right? So you've got three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty one or three hundred and eighty five SE fifty students tuitioning into high school this year. And um and what was the case historically was that all of the special education services related to the students in SE, from SE fifty had to be aggregated there so that it could be billed out. And so they pushed all special ed, so for instance, all of the parents except the one parent, I'm not sure why that one parent remains. But they pushed all the parents and and other services, but they, they had to then push general fund dollars over to cover Portsmouth's share of that while they then billed for the rest to get reimbursement. So it's um, so that's the tuition and fees fund. And that six fifty is the dollar amount that the last couple of years has been the support that Portsmouth pushes in to cover all those parents, et cetera.
Okay, so the tuition and fee support that would be in this category would go towards paras uh in the high school?
Paras, there's teachers there, there's a, there's a, another piece of um psychologist that was covered by Medicaid, because Medicaid is another revenue stream that falls into this tuition and fees fund.
Okay.
My go. Um so because we have to have a conversation about Esther at some point as a word, if you were to look at three-year horizon for special ed, what do you, I I hear you saying case manager is gonna come up. I hear you saying not gonna see a decline in occupational therapy, speech therapy. It's three-year horizon. What would we need to continue to deliver the best services as well as buffer in this trending of increasing, I mean, yes, we'd love to get to the point where numbers of IPs are declining, but let's assume that numbers continue to trend. What would that look like for your?
So I I think there are, related to thinking of it outside of special ed, those early interventions around any mental health supports, anxieties, depression, bores that we're seeing really impact student success uh would be key in all our buildings to have some systems of support uh as well as uh supporting family needs. So um uh social worker, I think, is in the budget under wellness. Um what we have seen related to special ed, but also anecdotally I've heard outside of special ed are families that have children in multiple buildings and the multiple contacts by the, for example, counselors in each buildings can become confusing for a family that is having guidance counselor at the elementary level, middle school level, and the high school level contact them to try to provide support, it becomes overwhelming. So one contact person for those types of situations would be very helpful. Um so uh family supports and then mental health supports. And I I think I would be at the cross each building with saying that.
Thanks.
Yeah, Liz.
Is there an opportunity to build in apparent liaison? I know there may have been talk about it with portion housing, but is there an opportunity to build that in and would that be part of uh the special ed budget or?
So I think there's discussion of a social worker with that idea being a piece of it outside of the special ed budget in the wellness budget if I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the Esther funds would be paying for some of the services to to take care of the mental health issues.
It could. Yeah, when we talk about the Esther funds, we'll wanna talk about where do we move that to best fit a number of the things, mental health.
And so that could provide for councils.
It could.
I think I would add trainings of our existing staff um would be helpful as well in all mental health arenas. You were certainly in half that trauma course trainings and, but I think it goes, that's one piece. Uh so professional development for staff and working with uh students of a variety of majors would also be a useful source of that money.
Okay, um Jeanette, is there any, we have fifteen minutes left. Is there anything you wanna cover on these uh things that you gave us?
At the top of the other notes page, the second page, um I know it's come up a little bit now, I P funds fairly stable, but really have an increase in spend on it because I've been here and around that six hundred thousand dollar mark. Um so right under six hundred and I was right over, but it really hasn't jumped with that cost of expenses there. Um uh there's a whole Medicaid sheet, but lot less revenue. It is under two hundred thousand for last year and projected for this year. Whereas we at some point, we're getting close to six hundred thousand dollars on a regular basis. Um and maintenance and effort, I just point out in that special ed is an area that there's rules that can't spend less than you spent the year before and uh making around the formula with all kinds of balances to make sure that we always are locally spending the same or increasing every year. And that's a requirement um that we have to meet in order to receive our IDA credible funds. Um I just updated the case loads that are throughout here. And I put the chart in with the students with the IPs because I had given you numbers in November. Uh and so just to show you kind of how it changed in the last three months, and that's always pluses and minuses. Uh so some buildings slightly up, some buildings slightly down. Um but I just thought that was a good, I always say, it's a snapshot in time. If I took it even now on the eighteen versus the twelve, some numbers could be slightly changed. Um and then the Medicaid to schools overview, this is generally what you got last year with a couple of updates. Uh number five on the process for potential reimbursement, there was um some additional caveat to put, and that's the orders that are signed by qualified provider now required an N P I number, which is a national national provider identification. You might know better than me what that term stands for because it's a medical term. And they have to be registered in the New Hampshire Medicaid system. So even our staff that are school staff that are um able to provide an order now have to go through two additional processes in order to pay more necessary, but just added one more layer. And as I said, we do contract with the provider as well for those that we can't get that consent or we don't have a staff member, we do have a process to get some orders signed. And then uh at the bottom, more largest areas of revenue loss, I actually took one out. They, they, there was, they were saying like couldn't back bill if we didn't have everything in order. And they have gotten a little looser on that with the latest memos that have come up in the last couple of months that we can go back up to a year, get an order signed. So that was a little bit of a relief point, but it's different for those returning members that's not on this sheet. And then the out of district overview is really just a description of all the processes that go in place and those determinations. Um and the type of students that may uh, yeah, cannot ensure placement based on the team's reputation.
Who's doing your billing?
On Medicaid billing? We use an easy Medicaid process. So my assistant is the one that puts it all in, but we contract with uh easy high Medicaid billing in order to submit it. Um and my assistant does a large portion of the actual input of the information and the tracking of the document and it's a bit of time.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm I'm just curious, like with um time investment, and not that I wanna like cut this income revenue, but the time investment, is it, does it pay out for just the person doing the billing and the salary and the time that they're?
That plus certainly the um, look at the processes on the school side, there's a lot of time to go in and enter things like log their parents after certain time. Uh it certainly was not at all a question when you were bringing in five or six hundred thousand of hours. And you're hoping that it continues to increase and get up there. Uh right now, that's, that's a good question for that, at that less than two hundred thousand dollar mark. We have not quite figured out cost of my assistant, the cost of the speech therapist that uses a certain amount of hours to do this, the cost of the O G. Um I think we still make money um in the current scenario, but it's not near what we used to.
With a greater burden on the staff that are.
Correct. Uh uh the stress, yeah, the stress level increase. We talk, they, there's concern sometimes we make a joke that we don't wanna do anything that will lead us to Medicaid jail. Because if there are rules and processes, then you have to learn background checks on every provider, make sure that they have a Medicaid draw in the past. And so it's quite a process.
Liz.
I guess I was curious, um uh you know, obviously, we haven't made a move with Robert Lister Academy yet um uh over to the uh community campus, but I guess I wondered if, you know, obviously, a lot of these schools are specialized or, you know, they're um residential programs, but is there ever an opportunity to, you know, or is there a a visible opportunity in the future to offer more services or have services at that location? And the ability to expand more to actually include some of these kids that would otherwise go to um a more specialized school or expand to offer um like some middle school services there versus a specialized school?
Uh we certainly have had those conversations and it's uh dependent on the profile of the student because Lister serves a very um particular profile of student. We have brought up the conversation of middle school. At the last point, you visited that there weren't uh enough students for the cost of the increase of staffing that would be able to bring one or two students back that were gonna gain that. It's a continual conversation with the move to a new location. There's more opportunities for how can that potentially expand, whether it's under the title Lister or additional programs that could be more centralized. Right now, the students that are in here, there's enough of those diversity of needs. Uh for example, at the elementary level, that you couldn't take those students back and run a program because there might be a medical need for a placement. Uh need related to autism for a placement and need related to behavioral need, but it's not every student that has a high level of need is the same need addressed at one location. That is continually revisited.
Yeah, and I would just piggyback on that. One of the things in the move, potential move to community campus, in having more space to utilize and had conversations about programs like uh there's a program, Kittery Academy, it's a tutoring-based model. Um it's not necessarily a long-term placement, it's sometimes a short-term need. Uh and we spend money sending students to that, whereas we may want to set up a parallel program within community campus that would actually interface with Lister Academy and serve some of these more intermittent uh acute needs and certainly be savings about that.
Any other questions? I think so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I love doing this when you're here.
Thank you so much. Okay, um why don't we just take a five-minute break? Oh, oh, okay.
Okay, my go first and second, all the favor?
So, Michael first, Stan second, all favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Janette.
Well, it's the, but it's the, I don't know what she's got, it's Samsung, so it's a, it's one of those, uh, Android jacks, I'll, I'll look when I go up.
If it's an old one, it's a USB. It's a new one, it's a USB.
USC, yeah. I'll try. I think it's Lightning.